Call this meeting of the Harriman City Council to order on the 20th of January 2018. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Wright, followed by a pledge at least in the flag.
Yeah.
Before we pray, we need to be mindful that our national Thanksgiving celebration is just two days away, November 22nd, everybody knows that. But it's almost 400 years old, just looking back, and 1621 was the first one, went on for three days. So we've got a lot in this country to be thankful for. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as this Thanksgiving day nears, and we realize that the year is coming to a close, a year that's been filled with wildfires and storms and gun violence and other misfortunes that many people have suffered and still are, yet there has been many blessings that we have been so fortunate to have received. We thank you for our country and the privilege of living in America and for our county and city, and we exercise one of the privileges tonight as we lead in this open session, in our parade to speak and worship without peer. May we all celebrate our good fortunes and freedom this Thursday, and return thanks to you. Bless this meeting and those in attendance. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the room, please.
Daryl Cook?
Here.
Betty Holly?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Kenyon Mead?
Here.
Sam Russell?
Here.
Claire Quorum, any motion to approve the minutes of the November 6, 2018?
Need to make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Holly, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for discussion. Call the room, please.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Any motions to pay the bills?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Mead, second by Councilman Cook, Councilman Mead.
No, sir.
Councilman Cook?
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room, please.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. This time we'll hear from delegation. If you'd like to address this council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Dale Walters, I've lived here for about two years, every green street. Now, it's a single lane road, it's a nice little neighborhood, don't want the road changed. But it goes up to another road, and it's a big switchback. Big trucks can't go through it like garbage trucks, they have to back out, which is fine, because it'll roll over. If a fire truck comes through, it will roll over. I'm asking this council, please, we need speed bumps, at least three speed bumps on every green street, start right around 324, 524, on down through there, at least three speed bumps, to slow these cars down, because they're going to hit somebody. It's a single lane road. And I'd just like to ask this council, and I'd like a number, if you could, what's the price on human life? What's the life on a child? There ain't no, you can't put money on that. Couple of speed bumps, you know, a fire truck can't come, fire truck can't come down through there, it will roll over. So there's no excuse why we cannot have these bumps. When people drive their cars, they're supposed to look at all signs, because a driver's license is a privilege. You cannot compare that to a small child. You can't. Or somebody who's mowing their grass, like me, might stumble out and fall out, scared to death I'm going to get hit by a car. When you go up through there, please go up through there and look. I'm asking, every one of you sitting right here, if you're serious about what you do, and your heart is in this county and in this town, why don't you drive up through there and look? Because I've even had guys where I said, "Look, we can make some speed bumps, 3 o'clock in the morning, that quick create, it'll drive real fast." But we can't do it, we want to. I mean, old women want to pick up a rock and throw it through somebody's windshield because they're going way too fast, their grandkids are over there. Kids should feel safe. They shouldn't have to walk to a gauntlet and go to school, worried about somebody on their cell phone, not paying attention to what you're doing. I'm serious. I have watched people go down through their flat on a cell phone. It's a shortcut for them. Imagine this, it's like a covesack with a nice quiet neighborhood, but you got an opening up here that really, all it is, is just a shortcut for people going to work, when they can go like they've been going. There's other ways to come through, it's not longer, it's just, they like going through it, they fly through there. So I'm asking, we need those speed bumps, and I know they petitioned this before, and I'd just like to know why it has a hat. I'd like an answer. I think I deserve an answer. I'm a citizen, and you guys work for the citizens in this county, in this town, you do. So to me, politics, there shouldn't be no politics in this town, three speed bumps. Because people have asked this before, and I feel like, what's the problem? I'd like to know, like, know what kind of price you're going to put on a child. A million dollars? Is that how much their life worth? Get crippled up? I can run that curve, my wife and I, we had a small car, and I stopped, because this kid was coming down a bicycle, wasn't paying no attention, he was having fun. So I stopped my car, and I was ready to beat my horn, because he was almost going to hit me in the front. He was having fun, he wasn't paying no attention. I rode down, I went down, I said, "Hey, kid, you ain't paying attention what you're doing." And I drove off. I go about 10 miles north there. You see what I'm saying? If you guys had that going on, you would like it. I mean, I'm not trying to upset my balance here, but I'm serious about how I feel about who are elected people, what they're supposed to do, and what we expect us. Do y'all agree with that? Seriously, I mean, nobody's agreeing. Y'all agree with that?
This is the first I've heard of it.
There's petitions put in here before, I've talked to the people that live there, and they said it ain't going to do no good. We petitioned this before, nothing ever happens. I like knowing.
Let me explain where the area is, so everybody's familiar. If you know where the ball field is in Medley, the baseball field, that is the road. And it goes up to the top of the hill, and it is a one-way, it's not a one-way road, but it's, if you meet somebody going up that little hill, and they're coming down, you're in trouble. But it is, it's basically a one lane, but it's not a one-way.
Yeah.
And it's, the ball field is a concern, because in the summertime, a lot of kids do practice ball out there and stuff. So it hasn't came, as far as I know, it hasn't come before. This council, I think it had back years ago, before you all got here. But now, he did come down and speak with me, I talked to Kevin about it, I've asked Kevin to go out with the street superintendent and look at the road. Kevin has talked about if we, speed bumps, we look at the liability as to whether we can or can't, that's what we've looked at before.
Yeah, well, what I meant to say a while ago, which I did for some time, signs, I mean, people that have a license are supposed to be aware of where they're driving, and signs. If they take out their car, that's their problem. They should pay attention to what they're doing. That's common sense. You can't predict people don't have none of them.
Signs up there, you know, people, they're not going to read most time. And, you know, I was thinking about our ball field we've got down here at the complex, we've got speed bumps around it to keep people from flying around through there, because it is a ball field.
Yep.
Where you live at is basically, in that one area is a ball field.
And I know that one area there.
But Kevin, will you get with Mr. Langley and go out?
What's your address? 524.
524, over there. I think he lives right next door to Officer Turner, or he lives two houses up.
One house down, and there's another police officer that lives on the very end, right there at that turn.
Mr. Nelson.
And they all have the same concerns.
You're close to where that tree fell on that house.
Yeah, yeah, actually, a detective, I believe a detective, and, yeah, I, actually, it was after the tree was on the, I didn't live there when the tree fell. I bought a house on it, it'd be there.
But that, you're right, coming off that grove, that's...
Yeah.
They'll pick up a lot of speed coming off that hill, right there.
I'll tell you what we'll do, we'll have an answer to you by our first meeting in December.
Yeah.
That'll give our city manager and our street superintendent time to go out, look at it, bring a recommendation back to this council, you're welcome to come and hear the recommendation, exactly enough time to look at it, and I know we're, what, two weeks away? Thanksgiving, Christmas.
I believe that we don't have a full selection by then, we'll at least have some updated information for you.
Okay. Will that be okay, will you?
It'll be fine, I'll be here.
All right, we'll get you something by then, okay?
Okay.
Appreciate you coming, appreciate your concern.
Yeah, you know, I'm not much of a speaker, I just say it like this, y'all.
Well, we want our people out there to give us feedback, to tell us how they feel. We don't know until we hear it. I've coached ball for 28 years in Harriman, and practiced out there every year, and it's always been a concern, every year I go out there. My nephews live, their grandie lives in the house right beside the ball field, so I know how it is out there, and I want to see something out there also, so.
You folks, I've lived in Louisiana, North Carolina, I've been to every state, used to drive a truck, I've seen this country, you know. I'm retired, I'm ready to sit back and relax, and join a nice quiet neighborhood, live the dream, you know? And I'm just worried that, I have a nine-year-old brother, 1983, and this is why I am like I am right now, I'm going to tell you all. He was killed by a car, he was on a bicycle, his chain come off, good stop, out in the country. And you could see plainly the drive, and, you know, I wasn't there when he got hit, but I'm sure he was in distress, but there was a car going about 65 miles an hour, 45 mile an hour speed zone. He was dead on impact. It was a mess. Guy wasn't paying attention. If he'd been paying attention, he'd be, I don't know, 36 years old now. He died at nine years old because someone didn't want to pay attention. I'm just afraid it's going to happen up there. Okay, that's why I ask, put a price tag on a child's life. You can't do it. Let's get something done, y'all, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for listening to my gap.
Thanks for bringing it up to us.
Yep.
Thanks, sir.
I'm going to go, because I'm about to kill him.
If you come in, you can't leave once we get started.
I just, first one I've ever been to, I'm happy, okay.
It's fine, thank you.
But you'll be told. Y'all have a good day. How you doing? I appreciate what you shared, y'all.
Anybody else selected to address council?
Thank you.
If not, we'll go into old business. First item, discussing possibly approved final reading on ordinance 1118-01, an ordinance to establish the Harriman Police Advisory Commission. The motion to approve on...
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Cook, second, by, was it Cook?
Yeah.
Second by Councilman Wright. Councilman Cook?
Right, I have nothing.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved final reading on ordinance 1118-02, an ordinance to establish the Harriman Fire Advisory Commission. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second. Second by Councilman Cook, Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Cook?
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved final reading on ordinance 1118-03, an ordinance amending the Harriman City Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright?
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly?
Motion.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved final reading on ordinance 1118-04, an ordinance to establish the Harriman Public Works Advisory Commission.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cook. Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cook?
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room.
Daryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll have these on the December agenda to appoint the board members. This time we'll hear from council. Councilman Cook?
I'd just like to say how much we appreciate the fire department guys getting out, helped decorate town for Christmas, I think they took a lot of stuff down, and I've noticed them out the last few days, I've seen pictures popping up on social media, them up on ladders. Also, Billy Joe and Donna, I think they've been out almost every day around town decorating somewhere. Thank you all for your time and volunteering. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Johnson?
I just got a few things. Alan, I had some people mention to me about things at the park, one of them was a baby changing station in the both bathrooms. You think we can maybe get that for some of the parents, like the moms, to change them out? And I reckon toilet paper's still getting stolen, and they're asking about the water fountains, and trash cans, cigarette butts, and around where the playground equipment is. And that's it, that's all I thought.
The water fountains will be ordered in the spring, we would have winterized by then, to cover it by the season.
But that, the big thing was the baby changing station in the bathrooms, because they said they didn't have anywhere to change a baby out. That's all I've got left.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly?
Yeah, I took Pierce Roofing over to look at the temperature building, leak in the roof, and we went all up inside. He couldn't tell where, couldn't tell exactly where it was coming from by going inside, so he's volunteered to put up scaffolding on the outside and go up on the roof and see exactly where it is, so he can give some accurate assessment. So if you see somebody out there putting scaffolding, it should be Pierce Roofing.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Mead?
Sir.
Do you have anything, Kevin? I'm going to give some announcements, do you have anything to add?
Um, yes.
As Councilman Wright said in his opening comments, Thursday is Thanksgiving, we do have a lot to be thankful for here in the great city of Harriman, and I hope everybody spends time with their family. Tuesday is the decorating of Mary's Tree downtown at the Temperance Building, starts at 6:00. We'd like to invite everyone to come down, there'll be reindeer food for the kids, maybe some cake walks and things going on, so that's at 6:00 on Tuesday. That's when we do our lighting throughout Harriman, so all our lights will be cut on that day, so we've got to get busy getting the rest of the lights up. Also, Thursday is parade night, next Thursday, a week from Thanksgiving. I think they start lining up around 5:00, 5:30. If you're not registered, please go on the city's website, or on our Facebook page, you can get registered for the parade and be a part of it. And I think that's all the announcements I've got. I miss anything?
Did you want, maybe make note that we're going to line up this year back to the high school?
Parade lineup will revert back to the Harriman High School area instead of the ball fields, will be back coming this way down.
If anyone is interested in volunteering to assist with the parade, they can contact Natasha here at the office.
Okay. Anybody that wants to volunteer for the parade, please let Natasha know. Anybody that wants to volunteer to hang lights, Christmas ornaments, Christmas trees, anything else, please see Billy Joe Daniels, and he'll be glad to point you in the right direction. If you can't catch Billy Joe, come see me, or come by the city hall here, we've got a lot to do and a little bit of time to do it in, so, we'll get that done.
Do you need lights to be donated?
If you've got some lights, where you taking them? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, on Tuesday, the Mary Street, do I need to block Walden Street at both sides?
Yes.
Okay. By what time?
Usually by around 5:00.
Okay.
About 5:15, 5:30.
Have we got all the speakers in service?
We're testing them today. I know all of the speakers in the two blocks closest to this building are up and functional. The amp that goes to the block where the Temperance Building and HUBR, it had some issues and was overheating and kicking out, so it would play music, but it would only be for a short period of time, and then you'd lose sound altogether. My father took that apart and worked on it, reinstalled it today, and so we're testing it to see whether or not that fixed the problem. If it didn't, then we'll have to send the amp back to the manufacturer for repairs.
And I'll bring some information, I just learned today, on the speakers, where they bought them and everything, so I guess I can get there.
We did have, well, I mean, even before we changed out the lighting, we had some speakers to go bad, and had taken them from certain points where we had vacant buildings and moved them to locations where we had businesses located. We had a few more bad speakers when we went back to test them, do the reinstallation, so we do need to order some additional speakers to finish out the project, but hopefully we do have at least some sound in all the blocks right now. We certainly do, and they're too closest to us.
First item, discussing possibly approved low bid for a new roof at the community center. Is that you, Aaron, or is that you Kevin?
Either. Well, we put out bids a couple of weeks ago, and a low bid came in with cost construction. Justin, are you very comfortable?
Yeah, me and David, I mean, any questions that you guys have, we'd be happy to answer.
I really liked the way the, you want to talk about the process of actually what we're doing.
Yeah, what we're actually doing, the roof up there, it's got two roof systems on it, one's a spray-on foam over a built-up roof. We're going to take that spray-on foam off, leave the built-up on there, add a coverboard to it, mechanically attach it, and then mechanically attach the membrane, flash the walls, and put new metal coating on.
What exactly is EPO membrane?
It's just a white membrane, you know what EPDM is? The black membrane? The white is a TPO, it's got a different name, it's a thermoplastic. I probably can't even pronounce the name, but it's white, it's not as, it's not as elastic or as flexible as EPDM, it's a little more rigid, it's good membrane. Most places now, in the south, are going to the TPO membrane, you still see a lot of the EPDM up north. The biggest difference is the laps, on EPDM, the laps are taped together. At one time, they were glued together, now they're taped together. With TPO, they're heat welded together, so that's the biggest difference in the two systems. Besides the chemical makeup, and you can get different colors with it, it comes in white, gray, or tan.
Can you walk them?
Oh, yeah.
Sure can. We put EPDM last building I did, in the bridge, and it wasn't walk friendly.
It wasn't? Most of the time, most of those roof systems do very well with walking on, now if you're going to do a lot of work on them, if you've got a lot of units on your building, and there's going to be a lot of work around them, the manufacturer will recommend putting like walk pads around it to keep people from dropping the screws, tools, because they'll puncture the roof. But the TPO, it's a little more rigid, like I said, of course, you know, you can walk up there and punch a hole in it, even though it is more rigid, but, you know, as far as walking around on it, it shouldn't hurt, it won't hurt at all.
I had to, I had to tell my people to put on tennis shoes, so they weren't, they wore their work boots.
Yeah.
We had some problems with work boots.
That's odd, because I walk on them all the time, and, well, most of the ones I'm on are old and wore out anyway, so, but the new ones, you know, our guys wear work boots, and we put them on with work boots and stuff like that, and we hadn't had any problems. Those EPDM roofs are almost foolproof to put on, they're, it's just a simpler seeming system, you know, with the TPO, you've got to heat weld it, takes a little more craftsmanship to do that, don't have to be a genius, by no means, but it takes a little more craftsmanship to do it.
And that comes with a 20-year warranty.
Yes, it does.
And we did get in three bids, two officially, that actually mailed them in, one through email to me, and they were about $20,000 less, $20,000 less up there.
If I recall, did you, when we met, didn't you say this is the type of roof that you put on your building?
Yes. We did TPO, at the old armory where we moved in.
Yeah, it's a tan.
Yeah, we did tan.
Yeah. It's out there in the middle of nowhere, I mean, well, not in the middle of nowhere, but it's out there, there's no tall buildings above it, so you'd be fine with the white. The only thing I would caution against, you know, if you're at the base of a tall building, you got, it's something like a hospital, you've got people laying in bed, you can look out and that stuff, that white will really, you know, kind of, it's hard to see. And I would recommend a gray or a tan, but out there where the community center is, white shouldn't be any problem. There's no cost difference, even if you want to go with a different color.
You're careful, I put that roof on 20 years ago.
The foam roof, or the?
Probably the EPDM.
You did?
Yeah. But it was 20-year-old technology.
Yeah. Yeah. It's got a spray-on foam roof on it now.
Is this proposal, is, are you all doing the work, or you're subcontracting without somebody else to do the work?
He's the contractor? Yeah, I'm the sub.
Okay, okay. What is the, what's the total amount? That was the low bid.
Yes, the other official bid that we received was 89,925.
And budget-wise, we...
We had...
72, 74,000?
Yeah.
Did they, they gave us last year, and they came down lower than they did last year?
Yeah. The SBC were working off of a budget of 70,000 and change.
I know a timeframe, Jen here, what are we looking on timeframe?
Take about 30 calender bags, do the job. Weather permitting.
The only thing that I would be worried about, they said occupancy wouldn't be a problem, just whenever they're working out of the parking lot, as long as we're done before that first weekend, it shouldn't be a problem for us, on our daily traffic in there in the community center.
When you going to start?
Our games start January 5th.
I mean, that's what...
After they eat some turkey.
[laughing].
That thing's been leaking for too long, and it's really homeless the back from a lot of other things inside the gym that we can do.
Motion to approve the bid from Rick Cox Construction of $67,800 to put the roof to put the roof on the Harriman Community Center.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Cook, second?
I second.
Second by Councilman Johnson, Councilman Cook?
I'd just like to say I'm glad to see a local company getting a bid and been able to deal with people here locally at home. I'll say that about them.
Thank you. We're glad to work close to home. Usually we've got to travel an hour to any job we do, so...
Thanks for working on this and getting it down a little bit more.
Councilman Johnson?
Reuniting what Darrell said, I like y'all's building out there. I was driving by there the other day, coming back from Knoxville. It looks nice.
Thank you.
You've got plenty of room out there.
Lot more room we had, yeah.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Mead?
Yes.
Lonny Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck with it, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, man.
Next item, discussing possibly approved industrial and beer board appointments. I'd like to recommend for the industrial board, Chip Dunn and Rob Ayler.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wright?
Second.
Second by Councilman Cook? Councilman Cook?
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room, please.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Mead?
Yes.
Lonny Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. For the beer board, I'd like to recommend Randy Ellis. And the reason I chose Randy Ellis, he sits on the county beer board. He already knows the laws and what goes on with it, so just trying to put some down there, maybe a little bit about what was going on.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Cook?
I second.
Second by Councilman Johnson, Councilman Cook?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the room.
Darryl Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Mead?
Yes.
Lonny Wright?
Motion carries. Anything else need to come before this council? Don't forget Tuesday next week, Thursday next week, and have a great Thanksgiving. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All the way around.